All right. Uh, I now call this committee of the whole in the Mon County Commission Chambers in two forty-three High Street, second floor Morgantown, West Virginia, twenty-six five zero five on Tuesday, January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. To order. Tonight, we will be having several presentations. Uh, please note that the committee of the whole meeting in Morgantown is intended to provide an opportunity for the council, that being us, to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken at these meetings at this committee of the whole meeting. The following matters are to be scheduled and discussed, and tonight we will start with our presentation. A presentation of W V U Landscape Architects from the class with for Mayfield Outdoor Recreation Potential with Professor.
Vika Haas.
Vika Haas and W V U students Chelsea Elliott, Brandon Perdue, Devon Barkafelt, and Meredith Rossin.
Thank you for that introduction.
Did I say all those names correctly?
I think you did pretty good. Yes, that was great.
All right.
Is the mic on, everything's good? So, we're talking about Mayfield today. I've worked with twenty-nine students over three semesters, just have a few of them with me here today, um, and we've come up with ideas for what this city-owned parcel could be. It's two hundred acres, um, just outside of the interstate, close to Saberton and Seven, um, and we've just kind of noodled around to see what the potential is, um, student-driven work. So, we visited Mayfield four times, and we've come up with a mission, some goals, this is all, you know, up for discussion, um, but we think Mayfield has the potential to serve outdoor recreation at a beginner level for lots of different uses, rock climbing, biking, hiking, um, we think there's opportunities for camping, um, there's some really interesting green space opportunities with connectivity and kind of green belts, and like I said, it's close to the Deckers Creek Rail Trail, um, which is exciting. There we go. Um, because it's student-driven, and we can pie in the sky on this, we've identified some private parcels that might be worth approaching the landowners to think about easements or property transfers. One of those is the companies that are associated with Greer and Dominion Post, um, they own about a thousand acres in this valley, and there's little pieces that touch Mayfield and Snake Hill and the rail trail that are especially exciting for potential connectivity. And, uh, these used to be publicly accessed historically, even though they were privately owned, and they've gone, you know, back into no trespassing allowed, but there's a lot of interesting rock climbing on those parcels. Um, so we're talking about the Pioneer Rocks area, um, and close to Tyrone Road and Seven. So, Mayfield parcel currently is on a road that's very small and, and narrow access, and these private parcels could allow access to be trail-based from the rail trail. And the rail trail distance to downtown is a pretty quick shot on a bicycle, it's probably just as fast as driving it actually, because I've raced a car and a bike at the same time, so ten fifteen minutes you can get on a bike to downtown from this part of the rail trail. So, it seems like we're far out, but we not necessarily that far out if we could get this connection in. So, um, this corner at Pioneer Rocks has that restaurant bar, I think it recently closed, but it's, um, it's been open in the past, and then there's a, like, an abandoned gas station on the corner there to kind of visualize where it is. Um, so the Greer parcels are important to approach, this is what Pioneer Rocks looks like, I walked it with somebody who had permission to be there that day, and this used to be in the climbing guides in the nineteen seventies and eighties, uh, they were routes that were mapped and marked, and people would travel regionally to come see these climbing opportunities that are now closed to the public. Um, but the Mayfield parcel has similar topography and site conditions as those parcels, so it's kind of separated with kind of an upper level and lower level, there's kind of a ravine that kind of separates the two levels, and we started inventorying the rock climbing on-site because it was identified as a parcel of interest for recreational planning, but couldn't get the detailed site analysis as part of that larger regional planning effort run by M B, so the students stepped up. So, I'll have Brandon come and talk about rock climbing.
Hello. Um, over the course of four different site visits with the students, we've identified the different, uh, rock areas and different potential for rock climbing, um, said rock climbing is great for bouldering, uh, top rope, um, in different, uh, skill, um, levels. So, all of this, uh, rock data is in J I S, and it is ready to share. Um, most of the rocks, uh, that'll be named on-site, um, with the fellow students, um, most of the rock formations are very similar to what Cooper's Rock looks like in different rock, uh, formations look like locally. Um, a lot of them are textured, uh, very weirdly, but they are great for handholds and different, uh, levels of skill. Um, again, here's some more images of what those rocks look like. Um, this is a great top rope opportunities here, um, and here, this is what, uh, great bouldering opportunities look like. Uh, for the climbing, this is what a typical, uh, guideline would look like with trail access to the top of, uh, the wall and trail access to the bottom of the wall with an area for belaying, um, to sort of keep area or keep people out of the area, um, as a safety hazard, um, along with benches for people who are not climbing, uh, to sit down. So, the different anchor types, uh, there's natural anchors, bolted anchors, and traditional anchors, uh, with the natural, uh, and traditional, it requires more skill, uh, to set those up, um, but we highly recommend, uh, the use of bolted anchors for the rock wall, and it is key to not overbolt the walls.
So, the topography limits where road circulation can happen, this is a full build-out potential, not necessarily a phase one, but it's kind of the maximum parking and road access. The reason we wanted to weave this road, um, access road far into the site is this is how you would get to Botanic Gardens, and this is how you would get to Snake Hill, so these make potential trailheads for those existing parks, um, and again, this is, this is full build-out, not one phase. Um, the road currently has a thirty-foot right-of-way, so it is wide enough to make it into two lanes, um, a student looked at the grading that would be needed for that, and it's possible to do within that right-of-way. Um, it is two point three four miles from the site to Tyrone Road or one point three eight to Snake Hill in terms of costing road improvements, um, and again, that, that Greer parcel could make it happen by trail instead of by road in the early phases, um, but it is, you know, it's, it's asphalt millings, kind of narrow at the end, it starts out as a double-wide paved, but it kind of narrows down. Uh, the Snake Hill to the Mayfield site is particularly rough, but you can get in from Tyrone now in a, in a regular car if you're careful. We have to hand it over to Chelsea.
Okay. This is one of the, um, important aspects of it is access for community members, as you can see on the top slide, those are existing bus routes, um, with leaving with the center of Morgantown, and then the furthest bus route would out, um, be in Brookhaven. With a proposed recreational shuttle, we would like to create a shuttle where it goes from Brookhaven to Snake Hill Management Area to the West Virginia Botanical Garden, so it would create almost a, um, loop essentially, and that would be for, um, community members that don't have access to a vehicle, this could even be something that, um, the bus would loop around to these sites even once a week, um, so that way, community members can get out and, um, utilize these spaces.
Students looked at the logging history on-site from aerial photos, we kind of pinned down the logging date at early two thousands, um, and then we, we mapped all those, which areas had not been logged most recently, and what the kind of forest character was, hardwood or rhododendron evergreen, put those on topo, and you're starting to see these kind of patches that are of interest to wildlife users of site, and so we tried to plan around that. Those are mostly in those ravines, it was, it was topography that dictated the logging. Um, we looked at soils, you know, thin and rocky soils mostly, but when you overlay all these layers together, you get this real interesting patchwork potential of different ecological communities, and we think one of the major potential things about the site is demonstrate these different post-logging forest communities that can, can be managed kind of on a, on a logged site. Um, one student looked at edge effects and how to kind of soften the, you know, the wildlife bird habitat with, with different plantings, rather than have, you know, unlogged and logged in harsh difference, it's called dog hair thick when it comes up all at once like this, much of the site looks like this with these little tiny trees on it, um, two or three-inch caliper. We've come up with different plant palettes, um, what potential species could be there, uh, we've thought about, one student thought about connecting those older growth pockets with kind of ribbons of tree plantings to kind of start forming larger wildlife patches and forest. Um, the good news is it's mostly a north-facing site, so there's not a lot of pressure from invasives, um, because they need more sun, um, we did come up with invasive management plans for the things you might find on-site, but there's really not a lot of invasive pressure right now. One student looked at, um, adjacent property owners and, um, found that this, this parcel up here, number ten, just north of the site, is for sale currently, one and a half million dollars, um, this one south of the site, the property owner is recently deceased, and so there may be some opportunities for maybe thinking about a bigger site area at some point. Um, and then another student looked at view sheds, uh, which points on the site had the best views out into the forest, out over the hills, and so that helped us kind of pin down where the nodes or the key points of a, a potential park might be. So, all that analysis went into some design work, I worked with trail students and the trail design, um, curriculum, and then landscape architecture students for the programming, and we've come up with this idea of this kind of green, easy trails, connecting the key rock climbing sites in the first early phases, and then adding in blue, more difficult loops to kind of get these kind of running and jogging and hiking and biking loops, um, adding in more built infrastructure, specifically a campground, uh, maybe a stage or theater or garden space, pavilion or deck up at the top, so we're kind of emphasizing the programming could be phased, it doesn't have to happen all at once. Overall, um, there's a potential for a lot of programming on this site, and in fact, we're thinking it's almost looking like a state park, um, in terms of the recreation potential and the development potential, and that may be an important management option. When we started getting that big, we started thinking about lodge and cabins, and I'll bring, uh, Meredith up to talk about this, but we saw two sites for lodge and cabin potential up here north on the site, and then that private parcel, um, below the site.
Um, with all the programs incorporated within this site, we thought the lodge and maybe so few cabins would look really good to bring more tourists or even, um, people from out of state in, but I kind of had an idea of maybe, uh, first of all, having fourteen kind, uh, cabins, maybe single use or single family or multi-family, it, it doesn't, um, it's kind of up in the air still, but we thought about having, um, maybe a few cabins up in the northern side of the, um, the potential parcel, which is old forest growth, um, and where the lodge would be is more of a, is a very flat area where there is a lot of, um, good views for, um, the, we have, um, possibly about two hundred and fifty rooms within the lodge with good views on both ends of the lodge.
Um, one student looked at connectivity to adjacent parks, and if you could persuade private property owners to do easements, um, it could be two miles to Botanic Gardens or two and a half miles to Snake Hill, so this starts to form a, a bigger running loop or network or green belt for the neighborhood. Students looked at trailheads, you know, what those could look like to connections. Um, one student proposed, we found this one area with these boulders that were all two to three feet tall, and we thought that might be a great place to have a natural play area where you could see where your kid went in the boulders, and then you would not lose them, even if they were very small, and so she had proposed this idea of, um, like doing little sculptures tucked into the rock so you could give the kid something to look for in that kind of area where you couldn't lose sight of them. Some other students looked at more involved natural play areas, you know, higher, higher ticket items, but this kind of range of options is, is what we're presenting. Some students looked at ecological kind of restoration zones, one thought American chestnut would be a good community to bring back, you know, with those species, another one thought that having conifer demonstration areas was important, um, and so lots of different education potential, um, having interpretive areas with, you know, hammocks and this scavenger hunt for tree species for summer camps or nature groups, really trying to program it to activate it. Some students looked at stormwater. Some students looked at stormwater, what you would have to do if you put parking lots on this site. One looked at a stage area bigger than the Botanic Gardens, but the kind of same idea of integrating gardens and lawn space and having an event space. Another student for that same area thought just gardens, you know, just sensory garden and kind of, you know, wedding pavilion type area. One student looked at how you would cross the streams and wetland areas without, you know, being, with being sensitive to the ecology. But overall, we've proposed, you know, running loops and things that could kind of make a good five K route. If you, if you add these together, you end up with something close to a five K. So there's a potential for these sort of outdoor events and races as well. We thought about conifer demonstration area up at the top and down here. And that would integrate with a disc golf course. And I will bring up Brandon.
This is a conceptual design for the disc golf course. It is a full eighteen beginner-friendly course. How it differs from Dorsey's Knob and Cooper's Rock Disc Golf Course is that it has an average of an eight to ten percent grade on the fairways, making it very sort of beginner-friendly, not too strenuous, but still challenging for it being in the woods. There is a fifty-foot buffer on the outside of the course to deter people from entering the course, but also to keep discs from leaving the course and hitting people on the trails and from going onto the road. All specs are to spec with PD, PDGA. The current site that the discourse, this golf course is on, is on a logged, or is, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Is on a logged area that has inch caliber birch trees. So it does not interfere with any long or unlogged area.
One student thought, one way to activate this park in the winter, even if we can't always have snow, is we can always have winter lights. And that could add interest, especially for families, give them a reason to drive that park road in the dead of winter when we're all looking for ways to keep kids busy. And then Chelsea had an idea.
This was my idea. So this is at the top of the, one of the best view sheds throughout the entire site. So one of my ideas was a multidisciplinary platform. So it could be utilized as a yoga platform. It can be utilized for summer camps. It could even have outdoor music. So essentially, it's just a really simple build, two steps up and then a platform. That would be, you know, twelve feet by twenty-four feet. And so this would be a nice implementation for the site, definitely, you know, within the first stages of the site development.
Meredith, again?
Going back to the cabins of the lodge, we wanted to go for a more rustic or log cabins type of feel. We really wanted to reference Blackwater Falls cabins and lodge. We really liked that aesthetic and thought that would work well with all of the programs we have incorporated. But for the types of plantings, we really wanted to go more native and more conifers and kind of flow with that old growth kind of forest. But as you can see on the tops and the, on the top and the bottom, the top, we have the cabins with the little, little plantings surrounding the house as well as around the lodge, we have surrounding plantings in the front entrance as well as the sides. But yeah.
One student thought it might be nice to have a little kiosk that could be used for race events, for check-ins or on those nice snow days could be used for a hot cider kind of hut thing. And then thought about making a bike skills loop that could be wide enough to also accommodate cross-country skis when we do get those snow days. Another student looked at more difficult bike trail skills loop because there is enough topography here to play with different difficulty levels. Handing it over to Devin.
Yeah, so another student, I want to look at potential camping opportunities. Because we felt that Morgantown doesn't really offer a lot of campgrounds, just Cooper's Rock and then there's Morgantown campground. But to get to Morgantown, you take the highway both ways. And so this campground is a little more rustic. It's more walk-in sites, some hammock sites as well. So it's a cheaper alternative. And I wanted to look at something that is a little more like state park oriented. You have a convert station, bathrooms, drive-in sites, potential for maybe trailer sites. But we were looking at mainly camper, tent sites. And this could really be a launching point for a lot of connections because you have the trails that run right into the campground and that can connect to Snake Hill Wildlife Area or the Botanical Gardens. And with the right connections, you could get to Morgantown, downtown Morgantown within like ten minutes, ten, fifteen minutes through the Decatur Creek Rail Trail.
So as you can see, we're not afraid to propose big, but we also have offered you a big in-kind match here. So we tallied that for you for grant, grant raising or anything you need to do. We've, we've put a lot of work in. It's about ninety-eight thousand dollars worth of work that we have put together in this package in case you need to do a match. Next steps, it's, it's a question of management. It's a question of access first, you know, is it road or is it trail through those Greer parcels? It's a question of who might want to manage it? Is that a land trust? Is that a city park? Or is it a state park from the get-go? You know, what kind of organization could manage it at first? I think it's important to talk to groups like the Cheat Lake Climbers Coalition that may have more input, technical input on the rock formations. I think there's, there's a bigger planning effort with trails. This fits into that effort, you know, how does it, where does it phase in terms of when would it need to happen to kind of fit with the big picture? But overall, I think it's important that we're proposing something that brings Saberton opportunities to access recreation with or without a car. I think that's really valuable and gives us kind of a central landing point that you can, you can land there from the region and access so much of our recreation without having to, to kind of connect the dots yourself on how to access those points. With that, I will open it up to questions.
Let me start by saying thank you for that presentation. That was a lot of information. I tried to keep up on the slides as best I could. Would anybody?
Just, thank you. This, this is great. Just from a size comparison, looking at the map, it looks like the Mayfield site's like one point six times bigger than the Botanical Garden. Would you kind of guess that about right?
Gosh, I don't have the acreage of Botanic Gardens off the top of my head, but yeah, it's bigger. It's two hundred acres what we have. So core arboretum, I know off the top of my head is ninety. So two times core arboretum is the scale of the Mayfield itself parcel. So we've proposed some development that lodge and that in parcel that's privately owned. And we have another, I have another trail concept if you're interested for the parcel that's for sale, which is another, I think, a hundred and fifty acres. So there's, scale-wise, you know, for state park level, it could be bigger, you know, but for a starter, two hundred acres is a good chunk. It's two core arboretums.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yes.
I really appreciate all the work and the creativity and the variety of items that could be done out there. When you talk about potential recreation, it's a pretty, pretty wide-ranging and interesting set of.
I gave students free rein. Every, every student got to pick what do they think would fit there.
That's what's great about when you're learning and someone gives you scope. So, so there it is. So, yeah, I didn't know if anybody else wanted to ask any questions. But it's, it's beautiful. I've not walked all of it, but I've walked part of it and it's beautiful and has, the rocks are really interesting with lots of very deep, I don't know what you call, it's just pitted very deeply and sometimes fragile. So those wouldn't be your rock climbing potential places necessarily. And then other places are more sturdy and hardy, hardy for.
Rocks are really beautiful onsite and lots of people drive a far distance to get the good rocks. And so it'd be nice to make that, to emphasize that as a, a potential tourist attractant.
So over the next bit, it'll be interesting to mull over what, what might be possible here. But we probably won't tonight necessarily talk about what's possible. But this is a super great presentation and appreciate you all taking time out to show it off.
And for those watching at home, you can access this presentation on the Morgantown WV.gov website.
I am curious to know, have you approached any of the adjacent landlord, landowners?
Nope, nope. We've just been onsite four times.
So this is pretty much a concept that you, you brought.
Yes, student-driven concept, right? So this is, this is student-driven. When, when Meredith said, can we look at this in parcel? I said, sure, look at it, you know, just what is the potential of it? What does it add to it? It's easier to ask a property owner with something in hand. You know, could we have a trail easement across this back corner of your parcel to get to the Botanic Gardens? It's a different question than, you know, can we have your property? It's very specific. And I had the student who'd looked at the regional connections, like look for, you know, the person's house is over here. Back that trail into the ravine off the back edge where they, you know, they might not mind it.
People driving by were definitely curious and friendly.
Yes, we talked to a friend of a, of a property owner down the street. But that was, that was the only outreach we did and that was incidental. You had a question over here?
Vika, this is incredible, like what you presented to us and I really appreciate it. Like when I, when we were going through this, I was like, the amount of money we would have spent on a consultancy firm to do it. And I was glad that you included it.
Yes.
A hundred thousand dollars. What, what, you said it was just a student that came to you and said?
No, this is student-driven. So I knew Mayfield was on the radar for recreational planning, but I knew it wasn't a first phase. It's not a shovel-ready project, right? It's a project that needs a road improvement and needs funding. And so it wasn't going to be something that IMBA went into the like, we'll flag this trail so you can go build it next week level. It's, it's on the radar for IMBA. If you look at the, I talked to Rich Edwards last week on Sunday about it. And he said, yeah, that, we thought about ten miles max and we've got him up with about ten miles max for trail potential. They have it zoned, you know, zones of trails. So we took it to the level of where are the good rocks to climb was not something that was going to happen with the IMBA planning process. And it was the first driver on this site, like where are the good rocks versus the little knee-high ones? And so we, I said, we can do that. We've got, we've got time and we've got students. Students love working on real projects because they, they love thinking in a five to ten years, something might happen. It just, you know, makes their hearts glow. And so it was really nice to give them a, a project that they could chip off of. And then the, the programming, the class that they did this in was not a site planning class. It was a natural systems class. So the parameters were, come up with something that's outdoor recreation related for the site that you can then integrate with natural systems design. So it was really interesting to see where they took it. You know, the, the lodge fits the old growth forest on that in parcel. The, the stream crossings are around the wetlands. You can see the wetland, but you don't get into it. You know, they, they took their own little takes on it. So I, my contribution to this effort was putting the book together and helping with the trail framework. So otherwise, I guess in the road, the rest has been all student-driven.
Well, thank you, students.
Yes, thank the landscape architecture students. They put a lot of work in.
And, and what's the, like the current land use, it's just?
It has a little bit of hunting on it, but very little. And there's no evidence of active rock climbing or anything on it. We didn't see any chalk, you know, there's, there's nothing. As far as I can tell, it's being used by people in the neighborhood for hunting and that's about it. So it'd be good to get active programming on it, you know, because it is two hundred acres. It's a, it's a big piece of land. I think the, the perception was it would be more full of invasives than it was because you think of something that's been logged and then not managed, you expected it to be full of things. But it was, you know, dog hair thick little trees, you know, that have grown in. So it was, it was a pleasant surprise ecologically.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Next, we have the Main Street Morgantown, South High Street Districting Study with Mark Downs, the board chair of Main Street Morgantown, Amy Loomis, executive director of Main Street Morgantown, Craig Gossman, AIA, NCARB principal, Gossman Group, and then Russ Rogerson, president and CEO of Morgantown Area Partnership.
Hello, friends. Well, Emily's loading the presentation. We'll kick this off with just some kind of opening remarks about what we've done. As you all know, Main Street Morgantown looked at South High Street for a districting project last year. And, and the reason we targeted South High Street was availability of property, adjacency to neighborhoods and adjacency to trails and opportunities to build some connectivity to other parts of, of town, like the Wharf, for instance, that, that we think that there are some real opportunities for economic development should we, should we better realize that connectivity. So appreciate so much the partnership with the city and involvement in, in, in commission, helping to commission this, this study. And Amy can talk a little bit about the process.
Excuse me, would it be possible to tilt, turn it this way a little bit towards council? Yeah, that's perfect.
Good?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. So the South Downtown Conceptual Study we have to share with you today represents about a year of thoughtful work. We began our first character visioning with stakeholders in February of last year. So, and it's almost February now. So the, the goals were to envision and explore districting in downtown and, and to have a conceptual design plan that's a tool for economic vitality and, and to have this study be something that could possibly inspire the downtown focus area master planning that the city is about to, to undergo and to also inform development and business attraction. This study was jointly funded by Main Street Morgantown, the City of Morgantown and the Mon County Commission and the West Virginia State Main Street. And it was led by our Economic Vitality Committee, which is chaired by Mark Downs, who is also our president. We did a visioning, concept and planning. And for, for the unveiling of the, the presentation, we have Craig Gossman here, the lead consultant on, on this study.
Is this still visible? Do you want me to turn it a little?
No, it's good. It's perfect, it's perfect.
Well, thanks for having us in tonight. And I apologize, I've got a head cold, so you probably unfortunately hear a few hacks here through the, through the conversation. But as Amy said, we've been working on this for almost a year now. If I can roll that, yeah. And to echo some of what Amy said, it's been a lot of people involved in the process. There's been stakeholder interest groups that Amy ran ahead of our work. And then as we got into it, we had more, more opportunities to sit down with people, whether those were property owners or concerned citizens, interested parties and so forth. I'm gonna, this is, we, we have thirty-nine, I think thirty-seven or thirty-nine slides in this. The entire document's sixty, sixty pages. So I'm going to be kind of brief on some of this and try to get to the meat of it. But just to give you a sense of what we've got in the table, in the entire document, there's a, an introduction that kind of just tells you how we got started with all this, some background information on the, on the district itself, an approach that we adopted to look into and explore opportunities and then some development opportunities that we've tried to put some visioning together on and then next steps. So I won't go through much of the, of the background area because some of this might be a history lesson that you all would know perhaps even better than I. But we did, as we do in a lot of studies, especially urban design studies, we like to kind of peel things back and go back to, whoa. Okay, now what am I doing? Help, somebody needs to, I'm, I'm an Apple guy, so I touch something and everything goes nuts. While we're getting back to reality. Thank you. We oftentimes in urban design plans go back to sandborne maps and kind of peel the onion back of what a district once was. And sometimes you find out that you're not too far from the truth and what was instead of what is. So in this case, we did go back and take a look at some of the early sandborne maps and, and what, what is there. And what was interesting to us was that as the evolution of all towns take place, changes of land use and changes of uses take place. And in this case, this was a lower-density residential area of, of Morgantown back in the day. And then as it grew and things like the Warner Theater came on and other, other destinations, it became a, a real healthy part of downtown. So one of the things that fell out of the study initially was the fact that in talking with the city, Emily, Ricky and, and looking at, at some of the other planning that had been done, it was an opportunity for this particular neighborhood to not only address kind of a districting identity for its own branding, but to also look at it as somewhat of a hub to where it connects to other adjacent neighborhoods. And this was an opportunity for us to do some other, some other planning. We looked at all the property ownership, of course, in these instances. And as you can, it's, it's, I was kind of, you know, looking at the, the previous presentation where you have one owner and a lot of acreage. And when you're dealing with downtowns and urban plans, you have a lot of acreage and a lot of owners and some of which are pulling with you on the rope and some of which are not and a lot of different ideas. But that's the purpose of these plans is to try to get people to start to understand what a vision might be. This includes, and it's not in this presentation, but there's an appendix that goes with the document that really starts to identify a lot of the land uses and ground uses and upper story uses so that we could start to get some idea of an inventory of what was actually there. Because some of the opportunities for development as this moves forward will start to impact things like what we always talk about, parking in downtown, for instance. And we can't expect everybody to walk to destinations and urban plans in urban districts, but obviously, it's, it's a goal of ours to make it a much more user-friendly, walkable downtown district. But in the case of, of, of some of the uses that we've identified as potential in here, they are going to demand some other parking needs for, for the downtown. So I won't bore you with getting into the weeds on this, but if you squint your eyes and if you can see that teal-colored blue that's on the map, that's property that's in the hands of, of friendly owners, whether those be the, the city or developers and property owners that are within the district that have property there that are interested in seeing something happen. So I think it's important to keep in mind that we're always trying to... Where are we going here again? Is there a way to advance this with a click instead of the roller? That might be easier. Thank you. So, going back to it real quick, we have a lot of that teal-colored blue, as you see in the drawing, is in the hands of friendly folks that have an interest in, in it. Certainly, some of that is city-owned and municipally-owned property, that we've started to look at higher investor, better uses of what, what is on that today, whether that just be parking or open, open space. One of the areas that we felt was, even though this project started out as kind of a branding focus on arts and entertainment because of the potential of the Warner and other things like the One, Two, Three Pleasant, and got the Iron Horse and that kind of thing in the neighborhood, it became instantly kind of the, the big idea to us was that, gee, you've got Deckers Creek just down over the, the rim of the, of the gorge. That is adjacent to an urban area, that's kind of a unique opportunity. You don't see that every day in every city where you've got this, kind of the, the, the urban density up on the rim and, and a rural, very forested area down below along Deckers Creek. So, and very few opportunities to get down there. Yes, there are access ports that take you down to the trail, but we would say that some of them are not as inviting as they could be, and there's probably other potential for other connections. So that was one of the things that kind of caught our eye as we started to explore the district. On the approach, and I think this echoes that, that, you know, the vibrant downtown district like South Downtown is, is more than the arts and entertainment that we started to talk about initially in the project. We always look at districts as economic development opportunities, because uses are one thing, but another thing is to try to leverage these into economic development opportunities so that the, the city can reap the benefit of that, private, private property owners can as well, and it just makes for a healthier neighborhood or a healthier district. We thought that even though there is some wayfinding in downtown Morgantown, we, we still feel that it needs a little help to really try to direct people to specific destinations. Districts can help that. I'm not sure we're promoting a lot of districts in downtown with this effort. This is a focus on South Downtown. But geographically, downtown Morgantown is not that large, and it may be of some confusion if we start dropping a lot of districts around the urban development, that's, or the urban area. That's one man's opinion, but it's something that I think we have to be careful of. The outdoorness, which is a term that fell out of this, this conversation about the, the Deckers Creek area in, in one of our, our brainstorming sessions, is kind of a unique opportunity, as I said before. And then, of course, the opportunity to develop some really strong community connections. So I'm gonna walk you through some of the ideas that we had on this, some of which is the core focus area, what you might expect in this district that you would, when you would start out, is what are we doing on High Street? What are we doing in front of the Warner and Hotel Morgan? And kind of the key spot, that is, that is ground zero right there for our study. But then how does streetscape then start to enhance opportunities for connections? We've even suggested that Morgantown might explore, going back to two-way traffic in downtown instead of the one-ways. One-way downtowns are kind of a dinosaur of the past, quite honestly. It's something that most communities are undoing, because they've found that people drive faster through cities when they're one-ways. If they're two-ways, it's easier to find the destination that you might be looking for, and we think it's just healthier for mixed-use development to, to really be successful, thanks to the traffic patterns being changed. We know that can't happen overnight, and we've got some suggestions for you on that in this, in this document. A little bit on infill architecture, because we do have a lot of open land in this, and sometimes there's that tug-of-war between trying to be, should we replicate our history? Or should we, you know, design and build new, fresh architecture that complements our history? So we've got some thoughts on that in the document. The Warner Theater, of course, is something that I think we've all been trying to make sure that, that we, we don't, it doesn't get completely wasted and blown away. But more importantly, how does it get renovated and brought into service and, and back to life? So I'll go through this again briskly, but there are some overall aerials in here that give you kind of an understanding of the entire district and some of the thoughts that we've had about that. In this particular plate, you see that, that brick area, that is right in front of, that's on High Street, right in front of the Hotel Morgan and, and the Warner Theater. And we've started talking about getting the alley that runs between the Hotel Morgan and, and the Warner Theater from Chestnut all the way up to Spruce, as not just a pedestrian-only, but a pedestrian, shared vehicular access alley. We're trying to get more connectivity through the site so that people feel comfortable with it. But the, the, the big idea on that district, and I've kind of turned the, turned the orientation a little bit, Pleasant Street would be on the right, Foundry would be down on the left. And you see the, the, the brick piazza space in the middle, right on the street. We've shown streetscape in here that would start to complement some of the things that we're trying to promote, which is a lot of outdoor activity area, places for, as we call it, public realm that's interactive, where people can not just attend something at the theater, but perhaps be in a nice area outside that might have a small performance area, or sidewalk cafes that have decent setbacks from the sidewalk, not just sitting right on the street. So, so the buildings that you see in kind of that blue-gray are existing buildings, whereas the, the pure gray buildings are new infill opportunities in that site. And those bring about perhaps more restaurants or ground-floor uses that would relate to the entertainment arts theme, and then hopefully, upper-story development as well. This is just kind of a, a quick glance here at our, our existing conditions on the right in that aerial that you, where you see the Warner down in the, in the right-hand corner, and what High Street looks like today. And there's, there's been an attempt with some streetscaping there, but, but the, the narrow sidewalks don't make it very conducive for outdoor pedestrian activities. The, the plates you see on the left of the image, that's Fort Wayne, Indiana, where they have used, and it's, my, my previous firm did this work, where we went in and did curbless environment for that. I don't think we're suggesting that on High Street, because the curbs do help contain traffic. In this case, in Fort Wayne, they were able to do it because it wasn't a primary street. But nonetheless, you can start to integrate some new paving, some punchouts, additional streetscape. We've even suggested that parking on one side of High Street go away, so that we could widen the sidewalks on one side. And by the way, we haven't moved the sidewalk or widened the street in any, in any other place. So as it exists today, it's what it would be, we would just simply be removing some of the parking. Some of the new architecture that would be envisioned in that area, again, we, we would strongly support something that is architecture of its time today, but that it complements the historic fabric that's on the street and not try to replicate history. It's sometimes, unless you're Steve Win in Las Vegas, where you've got just buckets of money to put towards it, it's a difficult kind of exercise to pull off. So we would strongly urge you to consider, as new infill development guidelines are created for the, for the site, that you encourage architecture of the times, and perhaps even allowing some of the, the red brick buildings in this district to be painted versus just remaining brick. These are just thoughts about design process, and design review boards can certainly sort all that out as it moves forward. But I think that's something for them to really consider on how you want to set up the, kind of the rules of engagement, if you will, for the development of the site. And the, the image you see up in the left-hand corner, that is of the site now that is the Huntington Drive-Thru Bank site. And we're not trying to chase Huntington out with this study, but the thought came to us, and I think it's already been kicked around a bit, that perhaps Huntington might explore another location that's more conducive for their business, and it would free up that corner for new infill development and outdoor gathering, and really create a strong gateway into this, into this district. So these little elements, as we call them the creature comforts of streetscape, can really be something, something very special and contribute to the branding of what, what we were trying to accomplish at the end of the day. There's some dialogue in here on the, on the, on the two-way street program. And to, to cut to the chase, we would strongly urge the city to explore it, but starting from the south, where you've got two-way coming across the, the Viaduct Bridge now into the south part of, of High Street, where it turns into one-way, it's then coming straight at you, and you have to turn off onto Foundry. It would be pretty simple to, at least from a circulation standpoint, to just move that up to Pleasant Street and then on up High Street over time versus starting at the top and coming the other direction, because it's already being introduced, so you could kind of introduce it in, in, in small bites and let the city get accustomed to that, to that new circulation. Obviously, there's more to it with signalization and some of the signage for traffic regulatory that we go into that. But it, I think that you've got an opportunity to do something pretty simple on the conversion that a lot of, a lot of cities don't have that opportunity. So this is just some diagramming that speaks to that over time, and perhaps even some of the cross-streets to consider it as well. Obviously, we couldn't do this study without looking at the Warner Theater and saying, you know, this is kind of the, the dark anchor, if you will, at this point in time. But it could certainly be, come back to life and be a real vibrant destination for all of downtown Morgantown. But in this district, it would be the, this is the pinnacle of, of the, the urban development. So we're really encouraged by the conversations that are going on and some of the, the, the work that's already being done and undertaken by private development to try to get this Warner Theater back on track, so we really applaud those efforts. We've brought some suggestions on wayfinding and graphics in here, but I think this is something that the city can help sort out over time and start to consider. If this is going to become a district, what is that district identity? What is that final name? What's the brand? How do we encourage kind of an undertaking of the weaving the arts and entertainment theming into it so it becomes a part of the excitement of, of, of being in that destination? I'm sure in your travels, you've seen theater districts or entertainment districts in other cities, and there's always an emphasis on lighting and signage to try to create that theatrical experience on the street, not just behind the walls in the, in the theaters. This is some of the work that we've done in other places along those same lines. There's a bit of a joke in the urban design industry right now that all you have to do to create an entertainment district is drape some festival lights across the street, and you've done it. So it's, it can be really simple or it can really be complex. The one up in the left corner is actually something we were involved with in our downtown Charleston-West Virginia plan that starts to connect the old transportation center over to Capitol Street. And then just sometimes it's real simple and, and, and just real easy to do. The, the slides on the right, as you can see, those are the existing alleys between the Hotel Morgan and the Warner that could, that connect, could connect all the way from Chestnut Street up to, up to Spruce. And some enhancements you see on the left could be woven into that pretty, pretty easily. Some of the bigger ideas, and by the way, I should've mentioned, I think Amy perhaps did, but our local partner in this effort and other efforts we've been involved with is the Mills Group, and they're a really talented local resource, and we've always enjoyed working with them and their vision department create and offer a kind of a look at, at what a potential gateway might look like, not just in downtown Morgantown, but how do we cross the, over to Westover? How do we really introduce you to downtown Morgantown? And perhaps even the other direction to, to Westover? So the idea thought was to come up with some large pylons, some lanterns, if you will, so at night those would glow and give a real interesting effect and impact into knowing that you have arrived into downtown. Another thing I'd, I'll just mention quickly on some of the gateway ideas and murals is that today, there's a lot more going on with kinetic light than there is with stagnant mural. And it gives you the opportunity to really have options and, and changes through seasonal displays and other things by actually just projecting light and imagery onto buildings versus painting it on for its, you know, a mural effect. There's a festival, I'm from Cincinnati, there's a festival there called Blink that happens, I think, every four years. And they are bringing in artists from all over the world to set up illumination experiences. And it's just really fascinating to see some of this, because some of it is kinetic and has movement and light and, and music and so forth. So it might be something to consider in downtown. So that's that opportunity site map that I shared with you before. And this is looking at Spruce and Pleasant as you come around on, onto, onto Spruce Street around where the funeral home is today, and that large city parking lot that's right there. What we've talked about doing is considering a parking garage on that deck. If the Warner comes on, and I shouldn't say if, when the Warner comes on, and there's more infill development here, parking is going to be of demand. And we're certainly not trying to suggest that all the parking would be where it needs to be right here, because we actually want people to encourage, encourage them to walk about in downtown. And that really helps when the parking is spread out. But there is an opportunity to do something here on that corner, and perhaps even an infill building over on the other corner next to the rim, looking down into the, into Deckers Creek. And parking garages don't have to be stagnant, they can be very, very exciting architecturally. They can have lower-level ground-floor uses such as retail restaurants and so forth. And the upper stories then can have some really, some, some terrific facade treatments that, that really bring life to the building. This would be a, a potential site right on the corner of, of Spruce and Pleasant, which there is an existing building standing there today, but the idea would be that we could get a mid-rise building there with apartments or condominiums that would look down over the creek, and then be right in the neighborhood for easy walking into restaurants and, and other, other destinations. And we've also thought that, you know, with the rim of, of Deckers Creek, perhaps there's opportunities for even a couple of overlooks, something that would bring people to the rim and then give you access down to the lower, lower level of, of the creek. So there's a, a way of kind of bridging some of the almost mountain experiences that we have in West Virginia into your downtown, which is really an exciting proposition when you think about it. And then the South High Street building that's there today, there's opportunities to enhance that. We understand the developers are working on some of that right now. So that's gonna create a real new dynamic entrance into downtown along that route. And as you start to think about buildings that might even cascade down into the, into the Deckers Creek, there's ways for us to stair-step right down the hill with some other uses, whether that's public realm or, again, restaurants, opportunities to be right along the trail. And then above it, the big idea here was to consider how we might put a, a bridge in that would go from Morgantown High School right across the gorge on a pedestrian route right onto that shelf on the other side. So it'd be a really dramatic opportunity to create a signature bridge, pedestrian and, and bike-friendly, to connect these, these places, the neighborhoods, right into downtown without having to worry about getting in a car to take you there or doing a, a walk-around. This brings you right into the district. So there are a few other sites around that, around that location that we, we've explored. There's other images that are not in this, this, this summarized vision here that, that you'll want to take a look at in the entire document. But anywhere where we're going to go, by these, these opportunity sites, we've created some, some thoughts about what that might be. So, there was another slide there, but, oh, there we go. So I won't read all this off to you in terms of what it is, but we've come up with about six, what we feel are strong next steps that the Main Street organization and the city should probably get together and look at and try to move forward with, some of which has to do with marketing and promotions. Other things have to do with the two, two-way street conversions. Others have to do with working directly with the developers that might already be engaged in the neighborhood and see what we can do to actually encourage them to further their development opportunities. So with that, I'll say, any questions? I'd be happy to, happy to answer them. Sorry to speed shift through that, but there was a lot to cover, so.
No, I like that we're discussing the ideas of renovating and coming up with ideas for, like, the post office building in the downtown area. I think I see a lot of potential in that.
Absolutely.
And I'm excited about the Warner, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So no really questions and much of the comments.
Can you talk a little more about the next step?
What do you think is appropriate to move this thing forward? What gets, what gets us started?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, well, Main Street is, you know, there's a lot of things that are already kind of in motion. You have a strong Main Street organization, and I think that organization, in concert with some of the developers doing work in the district now, can maybe start working on more of a promotion-marketing platform that wouldn't, that would also include the wayfinding and gateway kind of, of graphics. But more importantly, start to paint a story about a new development district that should encourage developers and private property owners to want to invest into the district, because that's where the economic development benefit comes from all this, obviously. So the Warner is key, but it's not the only project, and it certainly isn't a project that we should be waiting on before other things happen. In fact, I think it would help the Warner and, to this gentleman's point, the post office, if we were to do more around it, it would all of a sudden encourage private development to want to be more involved. So, so that's, that's, that's kind of an easy, that's low-hanging fruit in my mind, because that's just organizationally getting, getting things together. organizationally getting, getting things together from a marketing perspective. What might take a little bit of work, but certainly you can start thinking more about it because you have it in place in other pla, in other areas of Morgantown would be the number three up there, create development incentive package for key infill properties. You know, how, how much risk is the city willing to become engaged with, with their property that they owned in that district? You know, sometimes we become such a, so accustomed to the uses that we kind of discount the fact that it could ever be anything any different. And when I look at the parking along Spruce that the city owns, it's not the highest and best use for that, that place. I mean, it could be parking still there, but it could also be infill development. It could encourage more economic development. So what does that investment package look like? What's the incentive package look like in working with a, with a, with a developer to come in and do that? Design development guidelines, I think, are pretty important to, to put together as well so that your design review board understands what the rules of engagement are on exploring and looking at projects as they come forward in this district so that you're all on the same page with that. So that's something else the city could start to, start to explore. And then on the one-way street conversions, I think, you know, you're going to have to take a look at that, look at the, you know, city engineer and, and ask yourself the questions and the, the Department of Transportation, you know, what, what, what's prohibiting us from trying to do that? And I think that that's something that you should, you should come right out of the gate on and, and look at right, right away. The Deckers Creek area, I think it's just, it's just there ready to, ready to happen. It's infrastructure that has to be put together for trail access or, or enhanced trail access to get down. So I don't want to put everything on the shoulders of the city to do on this initiative. But I think the more you can do to support the overall objectives and goals of the developers that would come into this district, the better chance you're going to have at, at attracting development and private investment to come into the, come into the neighborhood. Bill, I hope that hit a couple of things. Was there anything else that you were thinking that?
No, you, you covered it and I can, as you're going through, I can think of ongoing projects now that we're waiting to see what that turns up.
Yeah.
And what kind of data that gives us.
Yeah.
What I, what I was looking for is a way of gathering the interest of promote, of developers into the area and what you thought might be most appropriate to move us in that direction.
Yeah. And I think in most urban design plans, unless it's just so obvious that a developer sees it and just jumps right in, there's two things that can encourage them to participate. One is for property owners that exist there today to be encouraged enough to invest into their own real estate because a developer will say, gee, well, you can't even get the locals to invest in it. Why do you want me to come down from Pittsburgh or wherever and invest in your city when you've got people that aren't investing in it now? So that's one is to invest into that. And then the other is the infrastructure. What can we do to enhance the streetscape experience, the pedestrian experience, those kind of things? If a developer sees that investment, then they're encouraged that the city's behind the initiative and they're more willing to invest into the, into a, perhaps a building or a mixed use project like the parking lot and so forth.
Well, I have to admit, I am seeing that movement and just trying to figure out how we might encourage it even more so.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, and by the way, Russ Roderson, who I think is still here, in a way, he's already started to explore some of those, some of those opportunities. So I think that's, that's encouraging. Mayor, you had a?
So our, our MMPO is, that's probably the study that Bill's referring to, is looking at the patterns in the downtown and the possibilities of eliminating the one-way pairs and, and having more two-way as a way to kind of flip things up a bit.
Yeah.
And I think we're all eager to get going on that.
Yeah. And I mean, there's enough study out there and enough research and, and documentation from other cities that everybody that's gone that route has never looked back and said, gee, we made a mistake. It just, it's encouraged so many things about, you know, ease of connectivity and circulation. And there's even reports on traffic accidents. Incidents go way down when you get into two-way traffic because people are more inclined to slow down a little bit when there's a pinch point in the street and you've got traffic going both directions. When it's one ways, sometimes people are, you know, they're, they're no braining it. They do it every day. So they're just, you know, kind of flying down High Street. I mean, I've seen it just in the times that I've been here. There's, it's, you've got to be careful.
The wrong way down the one-way?
That too, yes. Yeah, it got my attention the first time I was going south on High and everybody was coming up in the two-way, right there at Michael Mills' office. It, it gets your attention.
So we, we've had some of those projections on buildings like for an arts walk before, just a temporary. But it, it's pretty amazing what they can do with lighting and
Yeah.
now what can be done with lighting compared to five and 10 years ago.
Absolutely.
It would be really nice to get some more examples of that type of sort of for the short term and then look at parking and, and organizing our parking and making use of those spaces for other things where we don't need the parking. I, I think it would be quite the transformation to
I agree.
make use of your plan. So.
I like that.
What's, do you know what the TIF district situation is? Cause I, I know we're different TIF, but is it, is it underwater? Is it an active TIF or is it connected to something else?
I'm gonna have to defer to, it doesn't exist in that spot, right?
No, downtown doesn't have any TIF.
Pardon?
Downtown doesn't have any TIFs.
The Wharf.
No TIF.
Not the downtown buffer.
And up into Greymont, yeah, that area too.
Yeah, Greymont, Richwood.
Right.
Sunnyside, the Wharf, but not the downtown.
Yeah, cause we have all these historic tax credits and new market. I mean, we have a lot of
Yeah.
financing, but it's interesting. Is it, is it usual to not have a TIF in a downtown?
Well, I shouldn't say it's the norm, but most cities, it's kind of like historic districts. Why do you want to spend a year putting one building on the national register when you could invest into doing a district and have an entire four or five block area that would be eligible for the national register and the credits? And the same thing kind of applies to TIF. If you're doing an individual TIF, which you can do, I mean, some cities refuse to do districts. And so you end up with individual TIFs around all these buildings and the sunset on the TIF are at different times and it's just kind of a management problem. If you put one overlay TIF in on the district, then you know, you've got, you've got opportunity to recapture many of the things we're talking about here on public realm and even parking garages to help underwrite the cost of those things.
What's the downside of a TIF in a, in a downtown district?
I don't think there is any unless you don't, well, I, I'm kind of out of bounds here because West Virginia law is different than, than Ohio.
Yeah. Come, come school us. I just, I just was wanting to make sure we're taking advantage of, of whatever would be useful and not detrimental.
Sure. Well, TIFs, you know, are good and, but they also encumber the improved tax value for the next 30 years. So it depends greatly on what your spend needs to be in order to make this happen. And that's where the incentives and that discussion can take place about how do we package, what do we need to package to attract that kind of investment? And then a lot of times the investment itself will drive increased tax value. Just because it's not TIF doesn't mean you couldn't direct that tax value
Right.
for five to 10 years into a, a public works project. So there's a lot of
So that could be just a decision, a decision made that the money would be, some of the money would be reinvested, at least in the short term.
It can become part of your strategy. And that's kind of what Craig was alluding to and he called them incentives, but truly it's a, a strategy of what level of public involvement is necessary, what enhancements are necessary from the public side to perpetuate some of that private investment. And so that's why this plan will be, what's good about it is, is giving us some very good ideas and we can kind of prioritize, you know, what, how does, how do you want to address it? How do you want to tack it and where do we want to go first? And we have a couple of active potential projects and redoing buildings in that area anyhow. So, you know, some of that can really actually expedite that whole process too.
That's right.
So.
Whether there's a TIF or not.
Again, I'd rather understand what we want to do and need to do before recommending any particular tool to use.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Fine with me not to do a TIF.
Yeah.
Just wanting to see how we can get some money reinvested back in as we're moving forward so we can have more of those public amenities.
Yeah, there, there are several tools. There may be some, you know, other opportunities to bring funds in. But also, you know, once you get some of those design standards identified, understanding what, what level of expense that may be to encourage for private and public investment. So it's kind of taking it to the next step that I think will clearly identify, you know, and help in developing the strategy of how we want to go about dealing with the, the public aspect of it.
I'm great with the concepts at this point. I just, I just wanted to
No, no, those are good questions.
Figure out how the heck we accomplish this because here we are.
You know, it takes investment, right? And it takes investment from the private sector and the public sector. I think the key here is, is, you know, you don't want the public sector to, to own the project. You want to do what, you know, the public sector part in order to enhance the, the private investment. And that's, and that's a balancing act. It's not a 50-50. That's, that, that's enough to get it over the hump type of, of situation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we see it all the time that private development just cannot shoulder the cost of things kind of outside of the walls of the building or the, the property that they're doing. And so, you know, streetscape enhancements and lighting and some of the public amenities get left behind because you don't have a tool that you're using to, to pay for that. But I just mentioned CRA could be another tool. TIF is another tool. There's a variety of tools. And kind of the creative capital stack, as they say today, on how is a project being funded? Well, it's not just the brick and mortar. It's also the public realm. How are we doing both so that we really get a district, not just individual buildings? So.
If I, if I could ask one more thing. You talked about the traffic flow and having ease of traffic and going in both directions. If we were able to apply that here, would that make it easier for us to shut down like High Street for foot traffic on Sundays and then be able to divert traffic to make it easier for people to go out shopping Saturday mornings or go out in the evenings?
Yeah, I, I think it would. I mean, I, I think that's part of the study. But right now, if you shut down High Street, you know, what are your options going through? You've got to get down to University really or Chestnut. And so I think if you were to put two-way traffic in, it just gives you more options. You know, think of it as water flowing through plumbing. If it's all going one direction and two big arterials, you don't have many options to reroute the water. So this way, I think it, it would really help you do things like that. In fact, part of what we're suggesting on that High Street section is exactly what you said, to be able to shut it down on occasion from Pleasant down to Foundry and create a real festival environment for that.
I can't remember what the German festival is. It's like around Christmas time where they shut things down for a week. It's real popular.
Here in Morgantown?
No, it's in Germany they have it.
Oh, yeah. Oktoberfest, obviously is the big beer deal, but then there's
I live there for
The market, the market.
Christmas market.
Christmas market.
Which is something I'd like to see in terms of shutting it down for the holiday season to get more foot traffic
Yeah.
for our local stores, so.
Well, not to, to go down a rabbit hole, but you talk about the lighting, you know, you could start to really invest into pieces of that. Again, it's, you don't have to pay for the whole system. Some of it could even be temporary, like we were talking about projecting light. But think about a festival weekend where light became part of the quality and character of the experience. Light can create completely vacant buildings, look alive. So you really get the benefit of just this experience. And think what that would be if it went down over into Deckers Creek and underlit the bridges and maybe even some other type of lighting in a temporary way. It could really be spectacular.
Craig, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and watching as this project has evolved from our initial input sessions and brainstorming to the presentation to now the final document. And I can't wait to see it in its entirety.
Yeah.
I'm on many of the Main Street committees and one of them has been trying to do some prioritization of projects for this year. And I think we've naturally kind of gravitated towards some things in this specific part of downtown and some things that you've mentioned here. So let's make sure that we make it a usable plan and not just a pretty one.
Yeah, exactly. Now, it's never our, I don't get any joy out of seeing these things on shelves. So, you know, it's, but there is some work. This is kind of like when the work begins. You know, I kind of sometimes say I'm the, I'm the, the pastor that just brought the two couple together for their marriage. It's up to them to make the marriage work.
Your work's done, ours starts.
Exactly. But I would also say that, you know, you may have some partners that you're not thinking about too. I mean, obviously WVU's involved in many things here and they might find an interest in this, even with an off-campus location if the Warner were to come back to life for part of their programming. But maybe even utility companies and other community investors would have an interest in being a part of this. If you go to entertainment districts, you oftentimes see that that pavilion was paid for by Fifth Third Bank or it was paid for by this and they get naming rights for that and so forth. I think there are opportunities to integrate some of that in here and help pay and underwrite the, for the project. In Lexington 15 years ago, Fifth Third paid a million dollars for naming rights for four years for a pavilion that we did downtown. They renewed it every year. Well, that million dollars was over 60% of the investment at the time. So think about some of the creative partnerships, the creative capital stack. And as Russ said, he's, he's, his office, that's what they do every day. So, so again, thank you. Thanks to the city and thanks to Main Street for engaging us in the process. Always enjoy working with, with Morgantown. Terrific people.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have an ordinance providing the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the first ward. Ricky Yeager, Planning and Development Services Director. Sorry, I don't have any music to play to walk you through.
No, I don't have any nice images to present, so I apologize for that. But good evening, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, Council. Hope you all are doing well. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you about the proposed ordinance that if adopted would resume 1433 Dorsey Avenue from an R1 to a B2 service business district. The property encompasses one acre of land at Dorsey Avenue and Locky Lane and is located again at that intersection. The property was recently purchased from the Mon County School District and the owner's desire to make the existing facility there, which was an administrative building for the school district, available for lease to commercial tenants. In so doing, the owner submitted an application to resume the property in accordance with state and city code. The property is set back from Green Bag Road approximately 200 feet and is directly behind what was once a restaurant and bakery in recent years at 1451 Dorsey Avenue. To the east of the property and adjacent to it is the Mountain View Elementary School and several parcels of land that are currently zone B2 that have viable businesses on them. On the westerly side of Dorsey Avenue are two single-family dwellings and a tax consulting service. To the north is a church and one single-family rental property. And then to the south and at the intersection of Dorsey and Green Bag, most of that property is actually outside of the city limits, but the portion that is, that's owned by the Hastings family is currently zoned B1. On January 11th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider the new owner's request. And after review, the commission found that the applicant's proposal was in keeping with the city's 2023 land management plan and recommended approval. As such, staff requests that the council move the ordinance to its next regularly scheduled meeting for further consideration on February 6th. And with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Has there been any further consideration to the roundabout on Green Bag?
Recently in the paper, there was some commentary, I believe, and at least in our local news, there's been some more discussion about that project moving forward. In the staff report, staff noted that that project is moving forward. And maybe one of the reasons why that B2 is probably more desirable as the highest and best use is because of those roadway improvements that will move traffic through there. The comprehensive plan also suggests where possible to increase dense, more dense development. And that particular area is identified as corridor mixed use, which allow for a lot more different types of uses and again, higher densities. And again, when that property out there was first annexed into the city, it was annexed as B1. And there was some landscape buffers for some of the parcels that are out there in order to protect the neighborhood to the north and Mountain View Elementary School and that kind of general vicinity. But again, if you look at how it's grown up and the potential for Green Bag to become more of a thoroughfare in the community, B2, you know, is consistent with what the plan's recommending.
Whereabout is our city limit at that point?
So again, 1451 Dorsey, that's the abandoned vacant structure right now at the intersection there. That was the old Wander Bakery and the restaurant that I think was the more recent use a little bit before my time. But that's, the property is right behind that.
No, I'm aware of that.
But if you look to the west, that property is out, outside the corporation limits of the city. If you go across to the south of Green Bag, you have the Hastings family. And then to the right, that is outside of the city limits as well.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
The report is not correct. I voted against it at the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What did the Planning Commission, what was their reaction?
There was discussion, but the vote was to, that one, that was consistent with the comp plan in terms in terms of what the applicant was requesting, the B2 zoning designation, and that they recommended that City Council enact the zoning modification.
Did they say why they want it rezoned? Like, what purpose?
The applicant, they want to, to be able to make it available for commercial tenants. Right now, it's zoned R1, which obviously restricts pretty much all commercial activity in that area. And as I mentioned before, and I'm sorry I don't have a map, but the two parcels adjacent to it, so if you're thinking like where the, I think it's the Family Dollar and the Kitchen Studio are, those were initially, when they were brought into the city's late eighties, early nineties, were zoned B1. And then as developers purchased those properties and wanted to develop them, they asked that the city rezoned them to B2. And both those parcels that are adjacent to this one were rezoned in two thousand and fifteen, approved by Planning Commission and then adopted by City Council.
Ricky, just curious to Bill's question with regards to what was the Wonder Bakery and then the Atomic Grill? Is that in city limits or not?
That's outside.
It's outside. So this property is the last-
Correct. That's just right in. And then kind of when you go up Dorsey, it's kind of, as you know, hit or miss in terms of what's in and out of the city limits from there.
Right, right. Thanks.
I, I think that, and no offense to Director Reeger, Jaeger, but I think that, um, it was incorrectly in his memo. I think the vote was six, one, zero, because I, I very distinctly remember voting against this.
Yes.
It has me listed as a, as an abstention, but I voted against it. My concern was with the, the roundabout and what is going to happen there. We're also looking at corridor mixed use, but this isn't along Green Bag Road like those other properties that had been rezoned. There's a property in between and in my, in my mind, Dorsey was not like a thoroughfare like we're talking about Green Bag being. And I was also concerned about the opportunities that were opening up next to the elementary school there.
That's kind of where I, that's why I was curious if you knew what the facility used to be, because it's right next to an elementary school.
There's a lot of stuff allowed. I'm not saying it shouldn't be some type of business, but there's a lot of stuff allowed in B2 that may or may not be appropriate for that space. And I've, I can't say what went on when the other two properties there were zoned B2. I wasn't here then, but I don't know. I didn't, I didn't love it.
Can you say more about what your concern is with the roundabout?
Um, I just don't know what the final traffic pattern there was going to be and what this property could eventually be built into. When the roundabout comes, is Atomic Grill still going to be there? Is it going to go away? Like, I just haven't seen the, the plans.
Is, if I may add to that point, and then there was a reference in the staff report to my knowledge, that building will not be coming down. It will still be there.
It'll still be there?
Yes, ma'am.
And if I'm not mistaken, right across Chief and I, there's that tax office. And a little further up, there's, uh, insurance company?
Yes.
Other side, the other side of Dorsey, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yes, sir.
But those things would be in B1 or even R3.
The other opportunity to consider is, I know obviously that piece where the bakery was is outside the city limits, but it could potentially, you know, annexed in. And then, you know, right there where there's a B1 versus, or B2 versus no zoning designation, the potential for redevelopment would probably be more incentivized with that, with that designation. And it, then it's consistent with Lucky Lane that runs out then to, um, Green Bag Road.
Certainly. And my concerns were clearly in the minority. I'm just-
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ricky.
Yep, thank you.
Move to the agenda.
I would also be in favor of moving it to the agenda. We have to put it on the agenda, no matter how we vote on it, right?
Correct.
We have to give them- You can, no, you could choose, you can choose not to move to the agenda. Don't we have to hear, don't we have to vote on zoning requests, though? We can't just leave them hanging forever.
No, we have to hear. But that's, that comes down-
Anyway, I think we should move it to the agenda. I'd like to vote in favor of it.
That's items for discussion. This is our presentation. All right, uh, next we have Public Services, Cassie Mercer of Operations Manager and Renee Shipley, Manager of Municipal Service.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. I always feel a little bit awkward coming in front of you because I always feel like I have the least sexy topic to bring to you. And I don't know why that is. So tonight, what we are here to talk about and perhaps educate council about is, about this time last year, an application was made to the Public Services Commission to come in and examine the financial status and the operation of the Mountaineer Transfer Station to determine if a rate adjustment could be warranted for the operation of that, of the transfer station. And so, I don't know how in-depth, detailed, knowledgeable anybody is. I know I've learned a lot about this in the last year. That is something that takes several months to delve into by the Public Services Commission. And so, we have them come in, they audit things, they, we have to give them all of our paperwork, all of our financials, all of our stats, and let them kind of see, uh, a firsthand look into how things really operate, what we're about, and what we're asking for. And so it did take, you know, several months. And the process was completed in October and it was determined that the, the rate, there could be a rate adjustment at the transfer station. And so that has been implemented at, at the transfer station for those who come in directly to the transfer station. And it has also been implemented for customers in the counties in the waste shed that use the transfer station directly or indirectly. So directly would be people who bring waste directly to the transfer station. Maybe those are contractors, could be individuals who just are cleaning out their houses and just want to bring extra waste or whatever the case may be, they bring it to the transfer station. So that increase, um, did take effect in November of two thousand and twenty-three. And it also was instituted on November first for, uh, subscription customers, meaning anyone who is outside the confines or, uh, the guidelines of a municipal contract. That also was implemented on November first. So what we are here tonight is to talk about implementing that, that new rate for the customers that are within the city of Morgantown. And I know that there was an email sent with some attachments and some information. So I just wanted to know, do you have any questions about that information? Is there any process that you're not understanding? How, what can we do to help kind of guide? Or what, what can we do to educate further on why the rate adjustment was necessary?
Who would like to go first?
So, I guess part of why you're here is you, it was mentioned. And then, um, whenever there's going to be some kind of a potential for a rate increase, it's good for the public to be aware that that's a possibility. And also for council to be able to ask questions. And then eventually, um, what happens in the city of Morgantown is that we have staff look through and, you know, look through the numbers and determine, uh, some sort of a recommendation to council about how we should handle this. So, um, I guess we're today at this information piece. And council members who want to, um, ask you questions about this can ask questions. And then you would speak with our staff and then they would, um, potentially bring something back to us.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are we being told if there's a rate increase or are we being asked for a rate increase?
So this is a recommendation by the Public Services Commission strictly for the operation of the transfer station. And it does need to be implemented across the board to all users of the transfer station directly or indirectly. The next piece of this is that once it is implemented across the board, there is a six-month follow-up review. And if the Public Services Commission should determine that this increase was perhaps in excess of, they're not, they're not trying to make sure that we make tons of money, but they, they are intending to ensure that our costs are covered, the increased costs are covered. There has not been a rate change at the transfer station since April of two thousand and thirteen. So we are, we are entering now year number eleven with the rates as they had been, with the exception of what's already been implemented. And so what we don't want to see is, so with that review in six months, there is the potential that the Public Services Commission could say, we feel that the, that the new rate is, is excessive. And we feel that it should be X rather than Y. So now you need to issue refunds back to, and we would have to do that and we would have to show evidence that we did refund those, those excess funds back to those who paid them. So we don't want to, we, we, we just want to make sure that we are operating correctly.
May I reiterate the question? Are we being asked or are we being told?
So it is, it is something that's set by the Public Services Commission. This is the rate that they're recommending, that they're saying we can be charging. And it is something that we can pass through our contract.
Okay, so told.
Council, is your contract with Republic does contemplate this issue or was a subject of discussion among city staff and Republic with that renewal? There's a provision in the pricing provisions that says, um, increases in the disposal fee authorized or implemented by the West Virginia Public Service Commission will be negotiated by the parties. That obviously doesn't provide a lot of process, but that's the, that's the contract language you have.
I guess I'm confused by that because this was, I don't know, I attended a lot of, I attended every public meeting about this anyways, I guess not a lot of meetings. But it was never brought up to us as a council that this was kind of impending, despite the fact that she's saying this time last year, they were asking the Public Service Commission. We did not sign our contract until February, March, no, it was like March last year when we actually signed the contract. And that contract gave a rate increase of over two dollars a month already. And on the anniversary of our contract, which is within a month or so here, it goes up another dollar fifty per month. And I feel like I had this argument with MUB once before. We were asked to, to preemptively approve rates for every year through the five-year contract. And I feel like when I'm asked to do that, I don't like people coming back and then asking for more. It's kind of like you should have not given me the numbers ahead of time. I don't know.
Might I ask historically how many times you've issued the refund because you felt the rate increase was too much?
So we have not had a rate adjustment since two thousand and thirteen. And the transfer station has only been in our possession since June-
It was another company before we-
Right. I, I would have to look up the year before that. I would have to look up that information to see. And it's not something that's at Republic's discretion. It would be through the Public Service Commission after they do that six-month review. So I can look that information up and get back with you.
So the twenty-two eighty-four that is about to take effect per month, that will be the year twenty-four rate and rate on the anniversary of our contract in February, early March, whenever the actual thing was signed. It goes up to twenty-two eighty-four. In January of twenty-three, people were only paying nineteen twenty-eight. So that's over, that's six dollars a month increase in one year if, if the additional two dollars and forty-three cents is approved. I don't feel like our service has increased six dollars per month. We still get a lot of complaints about, um, Republic Service. So I don't know. I, I guess I go back to, do I have to vote yes or no? Or am I just here to look pretty? I don't know.
So really, the, the increase, i- it's really about the operation of the transfer station, which exists not just for us, um, it exists for the community as well. So we want to be able to, we've, we've been operating at a loss of over a million dollars per year for several years. And, and that's really just not much of a sustainable thing for us to be able to continue. So we really just want to be able to operate at a level that we can continue to reinvest in that business. We can continue to, um, employ local people and have it be another avenue that services the city. It, it's not really just about us wanting more money. It, it's, it's really because we just need to cover, and as we all know, COVID has kind of taken a, a toll, most recently on all businesses. So in order for us to just, to continue to be able to feasibly operate, and clearly the Public Services Commission did see the need for that, or they would not have granted that. We have applied several times in the past and have actually been denied. And we've continued to operate at that loss and kind of absorb that within our own business because we want to continue to be here. So I understand it is kind of a lot of money in, in some respects. The way that they calculate it is they take into account the number of units that are picked up and brought, the waste is brought into the transfer station and looking at the tonnage that comes in. And when you calculate that out, it's fifty-six pounds per unit that comes in. And the increase, if you calculate that out, it's fifty-six cents per week. So essentially, it's a penny a pound that we're asking for a rate increase of in order to be able to kind of recoup some of those losses that we've been absorbing for a number of years.
When did you make other requests to the PSC?
I believe it was sometime this, I was not involved, so I have to check on that more clearly. But it was somewhere around this time last year. Expecting that the process would take several, several months and possibly even be denied.
I was saying, like you said, you made requests and they were denied before. That's what I was referring to. When was that done?
So I know we were denied in two thousand and twenty-one and I believe we were denied in two thousand and seventeen. And I, I was not in this position at that time, so I don't know the details of why those requests were denied at those times. I can look into that if you would like that information. Unfortunately, I don't have that tonight.
What were you saying, Ryan?
Oh, sorry. The, uh, the proceeding that Republic initiated to request Public Service Commission approval of that tariff for the transfer station was in May of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is this, um, pardon my ignorance, is this used by all the trash haulers? Do they all use this transfer station in the area? Or do other trash haulers make other arrangements? I'm just wanting to know the workings of things.
Oh, sure, totally. Uh, yes, it is used by other haulers.
Wish I had a really great follow-up for that, but I don't necessarily. I just, it just, um, an interesting situation when, 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 when one company is operating the, um, transfer station and then also operating the trash service, then we have to sort of think about how that fits together. And so it's appreciated that you're here and explaining to us. And then it would be useful if you could speak with our staff more about some of the details that we're talking about tonight that we don't have quite yet. So we can make sure that we come up with a good arrangement.
We can certainly do that.
And they wouldn't let any other questions about this?
Yeah, ask your questions. This is- Yeah, ask your questions. This is your moment.
Just because some of us may not understand how the transfer site came about. If you did not have the transfer site, what would be your option?
So we would have to go... We would have to drive the waste all the way to Short Creek, which would be much more expensive.
Where is that at?
Outside of Wheeling, Short Creek landfill. It would be very expensive.
That would be your other option, is to go straight to the landfill. This gives you a middle location that is easier for local residents to be able to utilize it. Otherwise, they would have to go either to Meadowfield or to the landfill over at Wheeling, right?
Correct. And that means that it would actually cost more because we would need more trucks in the city because we would be spending more time on the road, going back and forth from the transfer station or the landfill. So we would have more trucks in the city, which would be more cost. And it would be less time per truck servicing the area. And so this is really... And plus, it provides a place where local contractors, who maybe are doing some work or some construction, it gives them a place locally that also allows them to keep their businesses running efficiently as well because they have a local place to come and deposit that construction waste without having to have a dumpster on-site that potentially damages their work site without having to also figure out how they are going to get their waste to another place that's farther away. And we do get a lot of those customers into the transfer station. So it definitely is something that serves the community very well.
It's a good service.
It is.
Is your transfer site still in Cheat Lake? Is it?
Yeah, industrial product, Westover industrial park.
Okay.
So this transfer station, you say, has been operating at a loss. How are you recouping that loss and how are you operating it now?
So we, as a company, because Republic Services is a national company, we are just absorbing that loss.
So I don't know how related this is necessarily, but it's related to me, I guess, because we gave you a rate increase. We asked for, like, specific complaint tracking on a website. It's not happening. We asked for, you know, being able to look at how routes are done, make sure they're GPS mapped, make sure that people aren't missed, specific areas to be focused on. It's just not happening. You know, my neighborhood continues to see specific areas that are missed consistently. And we've made requests, made complaints, beat our head against the wall. It's just the same thing. And now we're being... You know, that's why there's some heartburn on this council, just so you know. Because we feel like, you know, we were... You know, I'm sure some of us voted for a rate increase with the kind of like good-faith assumption that the things you said you were going to do, you're going to do. We got some nice new cards, and I think, to me, that's about it. And, you know, some people were not happy with the rollout of those cards. Certainly. So, you know, it's really hard for me to justify, especially to the citizens that come to me every single day with complaints about this company.
Bill's lid.
Bill's complaints about this.
Can we get the trash lids shut? That's the main thing.
About the things that have been happening. You know, I have individuals that live on a street that will call every week, every single week with the same complaint. We've had calls into your company where some of your customer service representatives will misrepresent your franchise agreement with us. And we've talked about that, and specifically has to do with the times in which they can deliver. Your customer service reps will tell them, "I have the franchise agreement right in front of me, and it says that we can go at..."
Pick up at four.
"We can pick up at that time." And the person on the phone will be like, "Oh, really? Because I have it right in front of me." And it does not say that. And that's been represented to me several times. It's not like an isolated incident. So, you know, I think it would be much easier pill for us to swallow had service and the promises made been delivered on since the time in which we gave a rate increase. You know, I don't expect you to respond to that, but I want you to understand what... Where we're at, where I'm at, anyway. I'm not going to... I shouldn't speak for anybody else, but where I'm at with this kind of request. I think residents and businesses in the county are also not excited about this. I mean, nobody's excited about a rate increase, right? But yeah, I mean, it's just that, you know, if we felt like we had good partners in this, and we felt like the partnership was reciprocated, I think it'd be a lot easier for us to say, "Okay, you're struggling here. We'd like to help you out." That's not how I feel right now. I feel like we've been taken advantage of since we gave you a rate increase, to be quite frank.
What I'm hearing, I'm Cassie, the operations manager. I've worked with, you know, a lot of you guys for a couple of years now. What I'm hearing is a lot of opportunity for us to do some re-education as far as what is available for the website, things of that nature. So like the complaint option that's on the website that links them to that email address, that is actually viewed by my logistics analysts that are, you know, right there with the drivers, speaking to them every day. And I know from time to time, if we have weather delays, stuff like that, we'll say, "Hey, don't forget to check out the website or use this email address." But it sounds like, and then to your point, with the lids, things like that. So we are coming up on spring, summertime, being about a year since we've rolled these carts out. And we had talked about partnering with all of you in the city to do pretty much like an audit point of how well are they being utilized? Is everyone aware of how to utilize them properly? So if we partner together to do a re-education of, you know, here's the tools that are available to you. Because I don't want you guys to have to take the calls for, "Hey, my house was missed." You know, that should be me, not you guys. So we can do a re-education of that, as well as, you know, when we're digging into the carts and how's this been going for the last year, really uniform because there's really no standard across the board of put the lids on or leave them off. You have some that say, "I'll leave them open so that way if, you know..."
It's when the trash gets picked up, they're leaving the lids off, and it's getting rainwater into our garbage cans regularly. And for instance, on one of my streets in my neighborhood, they just leave the garbage cans in the road regularly. And when I'm walking my dog, I end up having to put their garbage cans back on the curb for them because after they don't take the trash, they just leave it and go. I don't really know if I need to re-educate them to put the garbage can... My residents picking up the street.
Absolutely.
As far as the website, I mean, if you're saying the email that's on the website, it says like, you know, you can talk about miss pickup. That was not what we had talked about when we talked. We talked about, yeah, having like an app and a way to track on the website, specific complaints, not a link to your email.
Like the Track My Truck information, I think, is what we're referring to.
Because I'm just on the website right now. And yeah, there's nothing of that nature on Morgantown's website. Under where we have customer service stuff, we have like a holiday schedule, recycling, you know, things of that nature. For complaints, you got an email and phone number.
Okay. So there is some technology out there. Most of it's out there for the commercial customers. And I'll have to look into what the options would be for the residential customers. But we can look into adding that information on how to sign up for those alerts in a different way because this sounds like a different type of technology that we would basically just need to add like a little link to. So Renee and I can look into that as well.
Who was the gentleman that presented the year here?
That was Tom Berry. He's our general...
He was the one that gave us the PowerPoint on the app and the features it would have.
And I think our assistant city manager has a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a quick follow-up to city manager Haas's question. And I think I know the answer, but I think kind of helpful considerations. The mountain air transfer station also accepts and transfers the recycling as well. Is that correct?
Yes.
And not only for city residents, but then that is where I believe the whole Mon County recycling that's in Westover also gets picked up and taken to. So again, I would presume if this transfer station were to go away, any access to recycling would also probably go away or else you would be essentially taking, I think that one goes to the MRF, right?
Conneville.
Conneville. And so, you know, it's really kind of serving two purposes for that. And, you know, I think we've all become very accustomed to, you know, specific weather-related delays. I mean, I know a couple of weeks back, it almost doesn't matter what industry you're in, everything was shut down with a couple of snowfalls that we had just because compared to some other regions, we're, you know, very hilly, mountainous. Once you go off the side of the road, there typically is a fairly big ditch. So if you get stuck in that, you're stuck until someone pulls you out. You know, but I say all this because with the city manager's office, you know, aside from council getting directly from their neighbors, we also tend to yield all of the trash complaints. And they have significantly gone down coming to our office. That doesn't mean that they're taken care of everywhere. But from our standpoint, with the exception of the weather-related events, essentially the week of MLK Day, that whole week, and trying to catch up from that, where there was two big snow events, that service, at least from what comes to the city manager's office, has significantly improved. But that's not to discount anything that's happening in the neighborhood or anything that the council is occurring because I do think it may be more isolated to specific locations.
I think that we're getting kind of off track on where our thoughts are because I don't disagree that the service is being provided again in terms of having the transfer station, everything there. I think my, and this, I'm only speaking for myself. My concern is that a year ago, we were misrepresented with our contract in terms of financial and how we would be doing about it. And I don't like being told one thing and then being served another. And that's where my concerns lie, is I feel that last year was misrepresented because the contract that was signed and voted on by council was not without concern from the residents. And as Councilman Butcher pointed out, we took that contract in good faith that a lot of the issues would be addressed, but yet here we are.
Yeah, I get beat up left and right. How did you all not put that out to bid? How did you sign this contract? You gave them a rate increase. My service still stinks. I hope that everyone can appreciate the fact, like, I cannot pick up the phone or look a constituent in the eye and say, "Yes, I'm just totally fine with an additional rate increase at this time. I'm sorry that your trash still isn't being picked up. I'm sorry they're still coming at 5:00 a.m. I'm sorry that your lid's left open and you have three inches of water." But yeah, they need more money. So I can't. I can't.
No, I...
No, it's her turn. I...
I actually was just going to say, I get the same complaints, but specifically on one street in particular. And it's Clark Street.
Okay.
They're not picking it up. They're billing. This has been going on for a long, long, long time. And, you know, the gentleman's told supervisor will call him. Weeks go by, still no... There's just no communication there. So I agree with the other counselors. It's hard to tell them, you know, here's your rate increase, but we're not getting the service.
I understand. And Clark Street, just for my clarification, is it trash recycle both?
Well, no, it's just trash.
Okay.
No recycle.
And yeah, and I can look into that. And I also understand that at the end of the day, if I, you know, when I get my bill and, you know, pay it and I see an increase, I'm not looking to see like, oh, well, that's coming from the disposal cost. Like, I definitely hear and understand those concerns because no one's really looking into, like, why is this here? Oh, it's disposal cost. Okay, it's not an operational increase. You know, at the end of the day, it's an increase. And, you know, when I took this position a couple of years ago, I mean, honestly, what I wanted to do is make sure our communities were taken care of. And, you know, I don't want to go to work every day and spin my wheels and not feel like I'm hearing the members of the community that I live with. So, you know, I can work with you guys or we can go through to reiterate again, here's the best way to contact the local office. We can look into the, you know, the website with the Track My Truck option that Tom was talking about to get some more information on that. So it's, again, at the end of the day, it shouldn't fall on you guys to yield these complaints and to get them taken care of. And, you know, I don't want to run into you in the grocery store in my Republic hat and, you know, ducking behind the produce. Like, I want to be proud of the job that we're doing for the community. But again, I understand rate increase, they don't...
Separate it.
They don't separate it. So I definitely understand where, you know, where the concern is coming in.
So back to this lids down thing.
Yes.
What can... I mean, I think that this community uniformly would like their lids down.
Yes.
I don't know that anyone has ever asked for the lids to be up. Is that something that is hard to do with the equipment or, I mean...
It's a mix of both. And, you know, not to ignore Joe's point, like, putting it back where it belongs is, come on, like, that should be happening. Like, and I'll, you know, I'll make sure. And when I say a re-education of the drivers, so there's really not a standard set for the drivers, really anywhere. Some of them say, "Oh, I'll leave the lids open so that way we know that that street's been serviced." Some close them because it looks nicer. So it's really just a matter of, you know, the preference. And I understand with the rain, I'm five foot tall, I'm not...
Yeah, they're big.
I get it.
I think that once you have something of that size, the lid has to come down.
Yeah.
And we heard something about that, leaving the lid open to show that everyone's been through. But if there's any other... Because if you're tracking with a computer system, it seems like it might be possible to shut the lids and still know that, be able to track it and know that someone's come through.
Yeah, and it's really just like a driver type of a thing, like, oh, so-and-so is going to come over and help me with this. He'll see that I got this street, things like that. So it's just something that, you know, we can tighten up through our expectations with the drivers.
Yeah. Yeah, and I hear everything that you're saying. I mean, certainly, we don't want to be looked at as someone you're stuck with or, you know, that, oh, my goodness, what am I going to wake up to? You know, I'm on Facebook too, and I know some of the memes that, you know, what fresh halloweats me, you know, in the morning. No matter what... I don't want any member of council to wake up and wonder, "How many trash complaints am I going to get today?" I mean, we don't want that. So yes, we will do some work. We are not standing here saying we're perfect and that's why we deserve this. This increase that has been brought forth from the Public Service Commission is really related strictly to the operation of the transfer station. I know it's hard for, as Cassie said, to kind of separate that, but that truly is what it is related to. And we want to be able to make that the best that it can be as well. We will continue to work with council on the issues that you're seeing. And we will continue to refine that and make this what you want because ultimately, at the end of the day, you're paying us to give you a service. And we want to give you the service that you want. So we came here tonight recognizing that there was going to be some issues brought forward. We want to work on those with you and continue to be that partner.
So if there's app issues about how the app is organized now compared to what it is...
There is no app. That's the problem.
Okay. It said we were getting an app and we got no app.
Okay, so if there's an app issue as to an app's existence and then a website issue as to making sure that it's what was expected, we should make sure that we're doing the education piece that you're talking about with the number that's the best, the best way to contact you so that we're not getting general information or general contract information that's not accurate. So whatever you all can come up with to try to help with some re-education, that would be great.
We'll certainly do that. And I think part of it is because we don't send bills directly to residents, that phone number and that email, it's not in front of them, just like you get your monthly electric bill. So you know what the phone number is, you know where to find directly to your service provider. It's not like that with us. The number probably is maybe MUB's phone number. I've never seen what the resident actually pays from, so I don't know what information is on there. If we can somehow ask MUB to put a... If we can somehow ask MUB to put a message on an invoice, if they do those types of things.
What's the phone number?
I'm sorry?
What is the phone number? I'll share on my social media.
The customer service line's three zero four, three six six, eight nine zero zero. Now that will take them to the call center, which I knew that there was, you know, some concerns of people giving misinformation, such as, we'll pick you up at four o'clock in the morning, you know, things like that, so I've got that noted to make sure that that information is correct. In order to get someone local, I would strongly encourage them to utilize the website that has the link to that email address. The email address is viewable by myself, which I go in and check once a day to make sure that the logistics analysts or dispatchers are keeping up on that.
Is that better than the phone number?
I would recommend that, yeah, because it's gonna be viewed by the people that are local, that are actually interacting with the drivers and the supervisors and myself every day.
Is that the website that's on the containers?
Yes, so you scan the QR code, it takes you to that dedicated website, and there's a link that will take you right into an email, it opens up an email window.
Remind people about that. That's the local.
Yeah, we can do that quickly, I can do, you know, I'm not gonna say this week, because I don't, I'm afraid if we send something else, I'll think it's snow, you know, something like that.
Do it soon.
But yeah, within, you know, within the next time, and I can send it over, so you guys can be on the same page of the communication of, hey, just a reminder, here's the resources available to you.
Especially local.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, so what happens is the call center takes a call, and they put a service recording in our system that then is viewable by the same people that retrieve those emails, but the email will be a lot faster.
Yeah, it just goes directly through.
I really thought that part of our discussion last year was that a local phone number, a local person was gonna answer and be able to give answers, not take a message from a call center and send it to other people via email, and you should've just sent your own email. I don't, maybe I need to go back and watch our meeting from.
Okay.
We're good.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's still, from my perspective, it's still kind of in the air. Are we saying then that if service is improved, then we will consider the transfer rate increase? Or I think that I'd like to see, I'd like to see administration at least be given some, or is it you'd like to make sure that the rate study that the PSC did is accurate, and we come back with a recommendation as a staff, that it can stand on its own two feet, as long as these other conditions are met? Well, help me understand kind of where we're leaving this, because I know we're gonna get questions.
Kim, a favor, we get to that part of the agenda on the items for discussion?
Sure. Sure. That's great, thank you.
Thank you for fielding all of our.
Oh, of course, of course, of course, and I would just ask that please keep in mind that this increase is related to the transfer station operation. It is not tied to us serving the contract, it is the operation of the transfer station, and the PSC is expecting to come back and do an audit, and this has been implemented across, I have to look at my notes, because I don't know all the names of all the local counties, because I live in Pennsylvania, but it's already been implemented for Preston, Taylor, Harrison, outside of Morgantown in Mon County, and Marion County as well. So when they come back to do that evaluation, if it's not getting paid into as expected, it could affect any refunds that might be due as well. So if there is an adjustment to be made to this recommendation by the Public Service Commission, this could affect it the longer that this goes on, because that was already in effect in November for those customers.
With that explanation in mind, may I ask another question?
Of the, so Morgantown residents right now pay twenty-one dollars and thirty-five cents a month, what portion of that is for service and what portion of that is for disposal? Because you keep saying, keep in mind, this is a disposal increase and not a.
It's for the operation of the transfer station, correct?
So what's the breakdown of the cost that we're paying right now of that twenty-one thirty-five? What goes towards transfer station and what goes towards the people who pick up Bill's trash and leave his lid open?
So I would have to take a look and see what, how that stacks up, I don't have that information at the top of my head, but I would say that the bulk of it is for the actual service.
So if you could provide that to our administration, so that they could then provide it to us?
All right. Thank you both very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Do we have anyone signed up for the public portion?
Kind of unlikely, but good question.
Looking around.
Nope.
Ricky, did you sign up? Okay. All right, I'm gonna open this part of the public portion. Anybody wishes to speak? Once? Twice? I'm closing the public portion, now we move on to items for discussion. Careful of that. First, the South High Street districting study.
What are we moving to an agenda?
That's what I'm trying to understand.
Ryan?
Is there an agenda bit about this?
Help me.
Just like talking about it more?
I would love to help you out with that, but I do not know, there's a specific action item based on the discussion, I thought it looked like a great plan, and I imagine that's something that both Development Services and City Management can work on with respect to both public right-of-way improvements and zoning updates and coordination with Main Street on future efforts, but if you all, if Main Street had any particular action items for council, yeah, so I think that's what we'll do and try to report back quickly, I imagine.
All right, so then, we all like the idea of moving something someday.
Yeah.
By acclamation.
Get us something by next meeting, okay?
Discussion of, we love it.
All right, good. Then the idea, we'll go ahead and gavel that one. Next, we have an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the first ward.
We already moved that, right?
Well, no, because I said we had to wait until we got to here.
Move to the agenda? Second.
All right, by acclamation.
Well, there's no.
No, it's real discuss, I mean, we had our, it was a presentation, we were supposed to wait.
Yeah.
All right. There we go, move to the agenda. Next, the ordinance designating Norwood Fire Station as a safe surrender site to accept custody of children who are thirty days old or younger. Who would like to speak on?
So included in the packet for an introduction is the creating a section of city code essentially in line with West Virginia Code forty-nine dash four dash two oh six, which allows municipalities to designate a local fire station as a safe surrender site. I do believe state code allows hospitals to be safe surrender sites, but again, hospitals typically require someone to enter into a building that may have other people there, creating additional safe surrender sites for infants that are maybe in less conspicuous areas. If someone is facing a crisis, a new mother or a parent is facing a crisis, this gives an option for that individual to safely and anonymously surrender a child that is less than thirty days old. This was fairly new legislation for West Virginia, and as we started going through the process to design renovations for Norwood Fire Station, I thought that this could be a great addition with our first responders. We had conversations early on with the fire chief, and I believe he had conversations with some of his staff to see if that would be something they were interested in and supportive of the idea, so we got positive feedback through that, so this would essentially allow the site, there is a device that would essentially, it's kind of a two-sided door from the outside, someone could come up, drop off essentially an infant inside this box, it's a door that opens, you place the infant inside, the door closes, it locks from the outside, so you can reopen the door once you do that, and then once on the inside, it essentially notifies emergency services, the fire department, and other people, so they could go and attend to the infant that has been dropped, and it does dictate specific timeframes in which doing any kind of immediate necessary first aid and then taking the child to a hospital within thirty minutes. So this would designate any kind of, through West Virginia Code, the governing body does have to designate a spot as a safe haven site, and I believe this one is set up, at least as it stands right now, that that would become effective, I believe it's March twenty-ninth in the code. We have that timeframe set up, obviously, both to get through the readings of city council, but to also let our staff that is currently displaced from that site move back into that site, we are nearing completion of that, we've had in construction, it's called a punch list walkthrough, so you walk through and nitpick every little thing and have those items taken care of, and then the, this particular device is made by a company called Safe Haven Baby Boxes, and they have a process in which you go through a minimum of week-long testing every single day to make sure that it passes the tests every single day, and then it can become open to accept infants who may otherwise not have as great of results if their parents so chooses to abandon them.
That's wild.
So it's something that we are eager to be able to have and offer as a service, but also one that we hope never has to be used in our community.
See?
It's like an AED, just could have, don't worry. I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
For some reason, I had read that, I must have misread that bill, but like, all fire stations were designated as safe sites, but we have to like designate one specifically and install the equipment in order for it to.
Yes, there's a state law in reference in the ordinance, but the. That authorizes designation of safe surrender sites, you do not necessarily have to install this equipment, but it comes with certain protections when you do, and so the city has contracted for the installation and operation of the safe surrender, they call it a baby box. I think there's probably a tradition of fire stations being used that way, but not a legal mechanism for it other than this.
So there's one other current safe surrender site in the state, or at least that has the baby box, and I believe it is outside of Wheeling.
Yes.
And it's at a nine-one-one center, so part of it is making sure it's essentially staffed, essentially.
Close to first responders.
And so that's why oftentimes it's a, you know, fully staffed fire department or nine-one-one centers or something like that.
So how does that work with things like training or something where generally a lot of the people leave a fire station?
Yeah, so it is, they provide a fully equipped training, so we would have videos that people can watch, and then it is actually tested, I believe, on a weekly basis by the fire department, by whoever has it, and then the part of the contract is almost kind of like an operations and maintenance contract, we'll go come in once a year, recertified that everything is in good working condition. But part of the alarm system, it notifies multiple people, so let's say there's a fire in the fire staff, the fire department has left that building.
Yeah.
It will also notify, you know, nine-one-one police, and so someone can be dispatched to that site, and we would have personnel that could be there within the required time. It is temperature-controlled, I believe on the inside, when some, an infant is placed inside, it actually, I believe, video monitors just the inside of the box, there is no camera or anything that would potentially expose the identity of somebody walking up to the site, but then it is monitored on inside the whole time, and so, no.
That's wild.
That the building has been under construction, most of the building is actually fairly cold, but that is nice temperately, a nice temperature inside the box, and from the inside, it's a plexiglass on the inside, so, you know, every time you pass it, you see the inside of it from the inside.
You can see if there's a baby in there.
You can see if there's a baby in there, but also there's alarms, and that's part of the requirements of the installation of these, and they have, there are many devices, as city attorney Simon Tinn has noted, many companies that make these, this is one of them, and they've had, you know, several children that have been surrendered through these.
Is there, do we have any kind of like media strategy to let people know, because people don't know it exists.
Yes, so there will be grand openings, and a lot of that is actually set up by the Safe Haven group, because they're kind of big deals for them to whenever they get them. We were hoping to be the first in the state, but maybe second, but nonetheless, we're excited to have it, but yes, there is, but we don't really wanna widely advertise it just yet, because it's not operational yet.
Yeah.
So currently, it's covered up by a piece of plywood, and none of the signage or anything is up.
I guess kind of to that point, kind of, I know that this area was convenient, because we're already doing construction there. I wouldn't necessarily call this our most accessible fire station, is it along like a bus line or anything? Does, how would people who may be downtown, for instance?
We would love to see these at more facilities, part of it was, we're in the process of renovating, and now is the time to move that, but we're already looking at, you know, as we potentially look at replacing South High, or if other future renovations occur potentially at the North Side Fire Station, other locations that may be, make sense for these.
All right, move to an agenda. Any more questions? Just out of curiosity.
And I agree with Brian, I was wondering how this would be made known publicly. Is there, has there been some pressing need for this in the past?
I don't wanna misspeak, I feel like one of our emergency personnel have been involved in, I'm gonna call it an infant rescue, I don't have the specific details of that, and so I don't wanna quote anyone, but again, generally, the alternatives of having an infant surrendered in this manner, as opposed to some other manners, that, how they may deal with it when they're in that crisis of their own, and however people's political chips fall, sometimes options otherwise are being limited, and so this is, again, just an opportunity to make sure that any children that are born are making sure that they're in a safe environment, and any mother who may have recently had a child who feels that they can't deal with that, giving them away, an option.
Thanks for the answer.
I don't think we would really know the need, exactly, like, you don't really know the need for this until this is something, because it's anonymous.
It is anonymous, I'm not sure if at the state level, if there's any reporting requirement for safe haven sites, at least that would be public knowledge, perhaps maybe city chairman Simon Tinn would know, but if an infant were taken into an emergency room and surrendered, I don't know if that would be common knowledge. It may be.
Hope it's not.
But.
Well, I hope it's never used.
Hope it's never used.
Yeah.
But nice to have.
Yes, all right, so I got a first and a second.
We don't, we don't vote, we just say, move it to the agenda.
All right. And lastly, items for discussion, the public service, how would we like to move forward?
How would we like to answer Kim's question? How would we like to answer Kim's question?
That's what, well, that's kind of where my implication was.
I guess I'm confused, because does this have to go to an agenda for a vote, or does it not?
I guess my, I am confused in the sense too also, and maybe you can provide clarity. It was implied that we didn't have a say, but then, attorney Simon Tinn pointed out that there's negotiation involved, so can you provide clarity there before we discuss?
We had a long discussion about that.
What the city's role is in that, and I think, I'm going to have to defer to our legal counsel, because it's a contractual arrangement that we have at, at this point, and, and what your role is, is defined in the, although it's vague in, in some ways. But certainly, they wouldn't be here if they didn't need, need your, your input and, and approval at some degree. I just need to know kind of where counsel's at, so I, I know how to help facilitate either saying, hey, we're not going forward with it, or maybe there's something, maybe need more information, maybe there needs to be a deeper delve into the, the data and make sure that it's justified. The other is, is a thirty, is a ninety-day improvement period, let's, let's call it that. Is that, is that an adequate period of time?
They've had a year.
For you to feel like, you know what, they, they've complied, they met my expectations. And if in fact, the two are, you're tying the two together, that's an important element, right?
I'm not sure. It seems like it's not necessarily something that's tied together, because we've already hashed out the part that's related to performance on that contract, and that we should keep going with making sure that we get performance on the contract that we already went through. It seems like this is attached, it's related, but it's attached more to how we see the transfer station and the costs associated with that, and the fact that they both provide our services and provide the transfer station, and how, how those things mesh. I would like to see more information on those types of things, like what percentage of our, of our contract is already the transfer station, just so that we're more educated about this, because it hasn't come up in a long time. I don't remember it coming up.
I have, I guess, maybe a question. I think Ryan, maybe you would understand or explain a little bit more from the Public Service Commission. So just like any other rate, when, when the transfer station has approached the Public Service Commission about raising rates, the, the Public Service Commission approves that the transfer station puts those rate increases into place, and then, any hauler is essentially, is either allowed to or required to pass that on. So one way or another, Republic as the trash hauler is paying for those increased rates at the transfer station. Is that correct?
Morgantown's rates, solid waste rates for residents of the city of Morgantown are set by the city's contract with Republic, and disentangling those can be a bit difficult, because the, the monthly rate that's in our contract includes that disposal fee. And I think we'll need to follow up with Republic, because they didn't have the information tonight about how they allocate their service fee versus the amount they pay as a disposal fee to the, to the transfer station itself. How they need to account for that for purposes of their Public Service Commission oversight is, you know, seems related, but maybe a separate issue. So we can, we can investigate that with them.
But Kim's right. If they didn't need our approval, they would have just put it in on November first when they started charging everyone else, right?
I think it's maybe that with how our contract is worded, it, it says, you know, the city and Republic will negotiate any increases, you know, essentially rate increases at the transfer station, city kind of thing.
Good job wording it that way. Let's negotiate now.
Well, and anything that's part of the contract that we have already negotiated, that's the terms, if we're expecting an app or whatever, we should make sure that we are, as we move forward, working on each of those items, not, not to slack off on those, but it, it is hard when we're negotiating about something a little bit different, but part of the same contract, or part of the same relationship. It, it's hard to then bring in all this other stuff, even though it's completely valid to do so.
Is there any legal obligation for them to operate a transfer station in the place that they are currently? I know a lot of, you know, public, public services, public utilities are legally obligated to operate in certain ways. I just didn't know if that, so what I'm getting at is, I have a very hard time believing that a transfer station that's operating at a million-dollar loss isn't at some point then subsidizing, like, maybe this thing isn't making money, but logistically, if they're not driving their trucks wherever they need to, so then, I mean, that saves a lot of money, right? But anyway, I, I just want to know if there was like some legal obligation outside of a financial one that they have to abide by in order to operate this?
I understand what you're saying. It is obviously, the, the transfer station itself is obviously an operation regulated by the Public Service Commission. There are instances when the Public Service Commission will require public utilities to continue to operate despite contract disagreements or other, other service issues. I, I'm not sure if that specifically applies to transfer stations, but we can look at that as well.
Just for my clarity.
Thank you.
Because their argument was there would be no transfer station, but they came here asking us for a rate increase. But even if that transfer station ceased to exist, if they are not allowed the rate increase, then our rates would still be the same. They would just choose to be driving the wheeling. Is that right? That would be their choice to waste that money?
I think it's, you know, it's, it's hard for me, anyway, to describe those effects in a vacuum. I, I think, I think you're right to say that would be their contractual obligation to continue providing the service at the agreed-upon rates, wherever it is that the, the waste is eventually hauled. But I think you can also envision a scenario where if that caused them difficulties, there, there might be other, might be other things you have to consider outside of the contract.
Right.
I feel like I asked, but it's been more than a year now. Maybe someone else remembers. What, if I lived outside of city limits and had Republic, what would my monthly bill be currently? Oh, look, you live outside of city limits. You pay a bill.
Well, I can confirm that rates went up over four dollars recently, but it's about twenty-five dollars a month. But I may have heard that that may be dependent on the area that is served.
So it's not...
But also, you get no curb side recycling.
No recycling, yeah.
So currently, more than what Morgantown is getting for half the services.
Do you get a container?
No.
Not for recycling, obviously, you're not getting that service, and not for trash either.
But with that cost, you're given the, you're given a choice. You pay for having the choice. You could go with another company if you want it.
Well, you think that.
You're not forced to pay it.
But many times, the other haulers need to get a certain number of people within your community to all commit to changing.
Just like Comcast, yeah.
Yes, so...
Or you could drive and use the transfer station yourself.
You could, and we have done that and paid to drop things off at the transfer station. Or you can try to drive to Westover once a week and drop off your recycling and hope that one of the recycling bins is open.
All right, so I guess...
Sometimes between seven and three, Monday through Friday.
My question is, are we, so if we move this to the agendas, is it a vote?
No, if there's anything we need to vote on, all right.
Or is this discussion to...
To direct city management?
Yeah.
I would direct them to do a little bit more research and develop something to bring to us for up or down.
Okay.
But we need to give them enough direction.
There are two parts here. I mean, I, I, one is their level of service, and we need to keep hacking away at that and hitting them, and I know Carol does every single day, and, and we get that, and you get beat up. We just need to make sure that what they talk, we talked to them about tonight occurs. But in my mind, this contract is totally separate from that. This has to do with their operation of a, of a transfer site. So what I'm hearing you say is, would it be helpful if we reviewed the data that the Public Service Commission used to arrive at their, their rate increase? And we come back as a staff and say, from a, from a, purely from a financial standpoint, it makes, I mean, we can't, we can't say it doesn't make sense, or it just doesn't make sense. Would that be helpful?
Perhaps.
Including the percentage of it that is for the transfer station now, so we know...
Yeah, sure.
More.
I specifically remember a couple of years ago, when MUB came to us asking for a rate increase, and they had spelled out what they wanted their next three or four increases to be, and Ryan and I kind of gave them a hard time about that and said, well, now that you're asking for us to preemptively approve these, you're tying yourself into it. Don't come back and ask for more. Like, I'm looking, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-one-thirty-five, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-two-eighty-four, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-four-forty-four, goes to twenty-six-fifteen to twenty-seven-ninety-nine. I feel like they built in their rate increases. I'm not really interested in...
Republic?
Mm-hmm.
Just, um, I don't think we were given a, a very well-prepared demonstration tonight, presentation. I feel like a lot of times, our questions were not answered. I, I, it's, it's, it's also the fact that I don't like the representation of we've been operating something at a million-dollar loss for nine years. It'd be close. Like, it's, come on. And it's ridiculous. So, so there's obviously operational costs that are subsidizing that. The other part of this is, if Morgantown doesn't, doesn't do this after we've already came to them with the rate increase, then we'll have to shut this transfer station down. At the same time, every other county that surrounds you and municipalities that surround you have approved this, but somehow, the city of Morgantown, not being in this, will completely put us underwater. And also, the representation that if you don't sign on to this, then you probably won't get those refunds from the PSCs, if the PSCs in the business have ever been, or not approving utilities rate increases. So I, I just, I don't feel, I feel, again, like we're getting misrepresentations from this, from this company. And, yeah, Kim, I, I, I don't think I would mind something like a ninety-day improvement period. I do understand what you're saying about a one-year to do this, but they weren't under the gun to, to, to do anything, because we'd already improved or approved the rate increase, so what does it matter if they don't improve? So I, I think that's fair. That's a fair request to make. I would be nervous about what happens after those ninety days.
Right.
But, yeah, I...
They didn't pick up early for a couple of months after I formally requested them to be fined, but I'm getting those complaints again now.
Yeah, like Eastern Lookers, we're getting picked up for, they, they get picked up after you...
We have a customer on Pocahontas who says it's every week.
Yeah.
I under, I'm, I'm with you both on it, but I also see the difference in terms of the transfer station fee and the residential fee, but I, so I would like that information. I think that would make it easier, especially if our job is to be able to communicate with the people that live in our wards. So at a baseline, I think having that information to be able to have that conversation is a good start. I think the conversation we had at them tonight will help with our service.
If we could have some...
But have the information.
If we could have some kind of, like, a monthly meeting set up, and we could have different council members come in different times, you know, so that we had a couple of council members there, and that varied by who had complaints in their areas, so that, so that we do have some direct contact, maybe once a month for the next three months to talk about your thirty-day, your ninety days, but, you know, that we just make our own...
Trash commission?
And that may not be bad.
Making sure that we're following up.
Is it also possible to see, so this would obviously...
And that could include people calling in.
This would obviously increase, like, the rates the city pays for trash, correct? Like, our city services? Oh, we don't, okay. Is there some way to, like, have an understanding of what this, how this affects businesses within the city and their trash pickup? I'm sure it's exponential compared to residential.
Their proposal, Republic's approved proposal to the Public Service Commission was a four percent increase on commercial accounts.
Okay, so it's just blanket.
A two-dollar-forty-three per month increase on residential accounts.
Okay.
So it's a percentage. Now, I, I think their, their rates vary for commercial accounts, because they do that billing directly, but that's the, that's their, that Republic's proposal would be a four percent increase.
Okay, so that answers that question. Thank you.
So with that said, then, we'll get more information to be able to have a dialogue, and then, we will discuss options moving forward. Can we all agree with that part?
Absolutely.
Do we want, once staff has looked at that, to automatically bring it to an agenda with the, with the information provided and the suggested solution?
Could you create a suggested solution?
Sure.
So that then, if, if there's something to be had and some discussion with us about it, that we had the opportunity to approve it? Or not, as...
So this would not be on the next agenda, but future agenda?
No.
So, okay.
Yeah, when, when you all have something.
I'm just having a hard time being told, like, you have to consider these as two separate things, the, the performance and that issue, and the rate increase for the transfer station specifically, and then, we're going to tie the rate increase for the transfer station, depending on your ninety-day performance evaluation.
Well, I wouldn't do that.
Okay, good.
I would...
So that's not, that's not what we're moving forward with?
I would keep the two issues separate and be determined on both.
I mean, they need to give us the performance that they are contractually obligated to give us.
Yes.
Regardless, so...
Yes.
I also don't, if they're not closing living garbage cans, I don't suspect they'll be dishing out.
It's not even that. They're missing, they're billing people and not even picking up their trash. That's what's ticking me off.
Well, everybody's supposed to get billed no matter what, and they're supposed to provide the service, no matter what.
They're not, yeah, but what I'm saying is, you'll call and say, you'll be standing in front of the trash cans, and you could call them and say, hey, did you pick up my trash today? Yes, we did. We picked it up at six-oh-five. That's what they'll tell you when you call, but you're standing there, and they hadn't come.
We need to go through the website.
We do. I call, I go through the web, everything.
Yeah.
All right.
It's ridiculous.
Well then, that is it for our...
Okay, let's end.
Meeting? I have, move through to...
Yes.
Yes, please.